Hi, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz and this is Ward Talk. In Ward Talk, we discuss the challenges and solutions of the city of Ann Arbor. And today, I welcome Jeff Hayner from Ward One, council member. Hi Jeff.
How you doing?
I'm doing great, even though it's a snowy freezing day. So I hope you're nice and cozy in your home.
Yeah, fortunate to have one, yes.
Yeah. You are in Ward One, so let's just start with Ward One. What's happening? I know there's quite a bit of new development going on in Ward One. What do you have to tell us about that?
Well, it's true, there is, just north of my, my home here on, I'm on Pontiac Trail in Barton area. And just north up on Pontiac Trail, we've had about 60 acres go under development. Well, more than that now, it's almost 75 in the last, just in this last year. And so the Northeast Area Land Use Plan, Plan for Higher Density Development Transit, Dependent Development, and so we're seeing that happen here. We're getting a look at some of the new zoning categories that were created previously, like R1E, and seeing how that works out. And my opinion is not too well, that one. But you know, it's, it's happening. And I guess I would say the best thing about it is there is more housing being provided, and there seems to be a need for more housing. And also, we have asked all of the developers to carve off a portion of their sites to create a contiguous parkland and access route from basically the top of the city all the way down to the river on Barton. And so the east or the west, west segments of all these parcels are being set aside and to create this path. And so we're trying to maintain open space and nature paths and so on, so that people can access the river without having to go into the streets. So you know, that's one nice thing to see about it.
And about how many new developments are in process now?
Well, we had, there was a 34 acre, 36 acre. I mean, we're, we're probably gonna be, and, and we just had a public meeting last week, about 63, almost 70 acres. It's called the Old Brewer Property, which is on Duvarne, it butts Leslie Park, and comes into the top of Arrowood there. And we had actually tried to get a small group of private people together to work with the city to try and purchase that to be cooperative type housing, but it was already under, under development. And so that's gonna be some 500 units. So we look like, we're gonna probably add 2,000 some people in the next two years to this ward. I imagine that at some point, with all the new development, there'll be a reconfiguring of the wards. Ward One has gotten the most of it, because we have all the high rises down on Washington and State Street area, Washington State Division all up in there. And plus, we have everything happening up here. And so I'm, I'm gonna guess that Ward One's added, gonna add 4,000 people by the end of the next year. So over the last, since I've been on council.
Are you saying that as the population changes, it could affect what the lines are for the ward numbers?
Yeah, the ward boundaries are supposed to be balanced. So they're, the city is split into five, basically essentially balanced wards. And I'm pretty sure that we're getting the vast majority of the new development here.
Now, your ward also is in the water basin. And one of the continuing topics is the Dahlman Plume. What do you have to tell us about that this month?
Well, you know, it's, it's really, there's, it's really happening right now. I mean, as you know, I could talk about Gellman all day. And it's, we're at a really unique situation here with, with our, dealing with the Gellman Plume. So we, we had a consent judgment, we've been in court, we asked to intervene. We've been working with the polluter and the state to come up with an improved consent judgment. We, the intervening parties, the Scioto Township, the Washtenaw County, the City of Ann Arbor, here under Watershed Council, Ann Arbor Township, and so on, the Drain Commissioner. We all, we all rejected the fourth consent judgment as inadequate. It didn't, it, it had some improvements ahead of the existing one, but it also had, made some steps backwards. And so we rejected that, and so now we're going to court for this. At the same time, all of the intervening bodies and all the municipalities involved in this are united in their request. We all sent letters to the governor, asking her to send a letter to the EPA requesting a preliminary, second preliminary assessment and a listing on the national priorities list, basically calling it a superfund site, under CIRCLA, which is a federal law. And we all think we're gonna get a better deal out of the federal oversight. They have more stringent standards. At the very least, we're hoping that the courts will enter the new state standards, which are more restrictive under the old consent judgment while we move forward with the EPA process. Couple of years back, Scioto and Ann Arbor Township requested the EPA intervention, and it was granted, they did a preliminary assessment, and the site scores it. It's a superfund site and everything but name and listing right now. So, well, you know, it's, it's, it's exciting that we've never, we've never been this close to having a, really, under the state laws, they've just been, they, they're, the state is charged with keeping the people and the poison separated, essentially. They're not, it's not a really a cleanup. The EPA will, will come in and order an actual cleanup that will undoubtedly do more than what's happening now under state law.
But this is, this does tend to be a slow process moving forward. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's pretty slow. I mean, there's, there's, there's statutory limitations on public hearing things, how long it takes to do the preliminary assessment, assign a remedy, the public hearing time and so on. So there are certain, certain lengths of time that have to pass through, just through the federal process. But we already know what the, we already know what the cleanup, what the remedy should be. There's more data on this site than any spill in the United States. We have massive amounts of data that's been kept through the Scioto Residents for Safe Water and the Card Group. And so we have more information about this site than almost any site in the country. And it's actually, it's, I'm sorry to report that it's probably the biggest, it's the largest one four day oxygen spill in the history of the nation. And so it's, we know what's going on. We're moving forward with our own, the city is moving forward with its own efforts to put in additional monitoring wells and so on, to make sure that it's not headed for the water intake in Barton Pond. And, and hopefully that cost and the litigation around that will be picked up by the, the federal government soon enough. So typical, typical EPA process might, might take three, four years to get to that point where it's, yes, you're, you're on the national priorities list along with 1,200 other communities. But I feel strongly that this is gonna go a lot faster because of the information that's been gathered, and really, all the hard work that the community advocates have been putting in all these years to gather it, so.
So you sound, you sound helpful, hopeful and a little excited even.
Well, you know, I, I don't worry about being like, I'm not afraid of saying, hey, I represent a community that has a superfund site, because at least we know that it's getting cleaned up. So, and in fact, I looked up some studies last year when we started this conversation with our partners. And you know, most of the communities, you think of like Love Canal, or it's a traditional sort of situation where it was, that people were fleeing the community because of the pollution. And obviously, that's not the case here. And yet, as we see it bubbling up in West Park, going into these wet basements on the old west side, you know, there was a violation of what's called MS4 permit. It's a stormwater permit that the Water Resource Commissioner is going after the polluter on right now. So that means that the pollution was getting into Allen Creek Drain, and then kicking into the river where Allen Creek comes in by Argo. And you know, that's, that's a problem. Like, it's a problem when we have pollution in the wild like that. And so it's clear that these methods that the state is, you know, lawfully acting upon are insufficient. So yeah, I'm excited that, I hope that we have the federal oversight. You know, we have a republic, now we have a Democratic governor, Democratic president, the EPA is gonna be restored, and the superfund project was separate from the EPA, so it didn't take that bad of a hit the last four years. So it can only, it can only be better from here, is my hope.
So moving on to talk about the whole city of Ann Arbor, let's just start with the present situation with the COVID pandemic. I understand the city hall and the offices are closed through the end of March at this point. Decision after that is to come, depending on what happens. So what, what else can you tell us about how COVID has affected how the city runs?
Well, yeah, it's, first of all, I'm, you know, I wanna thank everybody for hanging in there. I know it's been difficult times with COVID for all our residents, and they've had a lot of challenges. And I think one of the, one of the things, I mean, I'm a little, you know, I'm unhappy about it generally, just for the community health and, and economic health and, and public health, of course. But you know, I'm sort of, I'm sort of bummed out that I'm serving during COVID, because it was so nice to be able to go to these community meetings, go to the old Fourth Ward Association, and where they have their meeting or meet, you know, meet with different groups. And, and it's really been restricted now. And so our council meetings are Zoom meetings, it's, it's kind of difficult to follow. And you know, a lot happened in that, in that public space, in the city council chambers. We'd have people in there before the meetings, they'd come up and, Jeff, can I talk to you about this or that? Or they'd give us something they wanted us to read, or they'd catch us in between breaks. And it was just more, it, it just allowed more opportunity to interact with, with the residents. And I, I'm, you know, and it, it changed the nature of my relationship with the community. And you know, it also kind of, I really feel that it set some technological barriers up to, to, you know, for, for me to communicate with folks, and also for them to be part of, be part of this, what city council does. And so that's unfortunate. I, I don't know what's, what's gonna make a change. I, I mean, I'm helping some neighbors get to their vaccination appointments this week. And so, you know, I'm hopeful that we'll, we'll overcome this and we'll get back to business. The economic implications alone, as we had our budget presentation last week, are, are worrisome. You know, it's not just, like a resident said, it's not just the, you know, he thinks of, he had an interesting analogy, that COVID is sort of like a comet. And you see the, you see the trouble up front, but it's the tail is what I'm worried about, because we have state shared revenue, we have, you know, businesses closing. And so that's gonna, you know, is there gonna be vacant properties? Are there gonna be, you know, issues with taxes? And we've already deferred penalty payments on taxes for late payment of taxes, because, you know, how are you supposed to pay your taxes if you're forced closed by the governor? And so, yeah, it's, 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 it's not gonna be something we come out from as soon as everybody's able to meet again. There's gonna be lingering economic influence, I'm sure.
So it sounds like you, you're inviting the residents of your ward to get in touch with you if they have, they do wanna communicate their concerns or their questions, seeing that they can't see you at a meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. And I've been feeling a lot more phone calls than I usually do. And as always, our contact information is on the city website at A2Gov.org. Just look for city council. And you can email myself at jhayner@A2Gov.org, or all of the council at citycouncil@A2Gov.org. We all receive that. And you know, I've, I've made it a point to respond as quickly as possible to folks, 'cause you know, it's like you're just sitting around, you say, when's he gonna get back to me? You know, so we really try and be, I'm really trying to be more responsive, and, and hopefully, folks are able to overcome that. And they're, like I say, they're always welcome to call and email, so.
Well, when we come back from our break, we have a couple of other things to discuss about the city of Ann Arbor. So I'll see you in a few. Hi, I'm Bonnie Gabowitz, and this is Ward Talk. We're talking with Jeff Hayner from Ward One. Jeff, you already talked about your ward in particular, and we're now talking about the whole city of Ann Arbor, their issues. I know one big topic has always been affordable housing, but there is some news for you to share. What, what's happening with the affordable housing and the new developments?
Well, we, you know, we've had some pretty good action on affordable housing in my last couple of years on council. We've, we assigned the 11, 11 city-owned properties to specifically for use for affordable housing, which is one of the few ways we can really get it, is to build it ourselves. And so Jennifer Hall from the Housing Commission is looking at those and has ranked them for us. And we're moving forward with development projects on those 11 city-owned properties. And we, we've, we've built into some of our, our zoning requests that developers do more for affordable housing, either make a payment in lieu or build spaces. And Ms. Hall has laid it out for me that she does a lot better when they just make a payment, because we have trouble with, we have a lot of people on our list for affordable housing on our waitlist, as you can imagine. And a good many of them are folks who are making a decent living at the federal minimum wage or below, but they don't qualify for these units. Like in the lower town, there was gonna be 15 total units in there when they're done with all the phases. And so I think there was eight in this first round. And so, you know, we had a 300 people apply for those eight units. And because they were allowed to make their own requirements, where you couldn't, you had to make at least three times your monthly rent. And so they had their own income requirements. And so they were allowed to take folks, you might say, off the top of the list from, you know, ranked by income, instead of the bottom. Well, really, the need is at the bottom of the list. And so, you know, we're looking for ways to really serve those folks who are at, you know, well below 60% of area median income. So if you're making minimum wage, you're making $30,000. If, if you're making a federal minimum wage, you're, you're, you're making $21,000 a year. I mean, that's nothing. And so not only does the federal minimum wage need to be $15 at least, but even that $15 at $30,000, that puts you at well below 40% of AMI for a single person. So we need to really redefine what we call affordable housing, I believe, in our community. 'Cause 60% of AMI, if you're a single person making $70,000 a year, you know, so it's like, that hardly seems like somebody who's struggling to find housing.
So are you saying that the city actually can change the parameters of what, what affordable housing is?
Well, you know, the HUD guidelines for vouchers talk about the various percentages, and they base it on, it's a combination of, they, what rents can be set based on what a fair market rent is, and income evaluation is done based on area median income. And in Washtenaw County, both those are very high. So it's sort of a double burn on the person who needs affordable housing that, if, you know, if you're working at a restaurant, you know, if you're like a tipped wage person, where you're making 3.80 plus tips, and now you're not working at all, what are you gonna do? And so we're never gonna, we're never gonna create the kind of housing we need to have a real mix of incomes and, and folks that, you know, hourly wage versus a salary earner at the university or whatever. If we want all those people to live together, live in this community, cut down on a, you know, keep with our A20 plan, cut down on commuting time and traffic time, we're gonna have to create more genuine affordable housing, housing that's at 50% or below AMI. And it's hard to get developers to do that, because there's, it's hard to get profit in that. And so I'm encouraging us, as we look at these other rezoning issues like transitory and development, or, well, especially that, or the ADUs are our conversation right now, accessory dwelling units, to look at ways to lower what is allowed and reward development for building in actual affordable housing or making these donations that we need. I think if we, if we, if we set the bar a little lower and then reward, which is all we can do, we can't require it. I think we'd be better off, I think we'd get developers who say, okay, I need those extra units to make my books work, and so I'll do that. We'll give you some affordable housing. And we saw that happen with the rezoning request on the Garnet, which is by the Broadway Bridge. And they were under one, they asked for one type of zoning that didn't require any payments. And we said, really, that's inappropriate, it should be this type of zoning. And they were happy to do it. And it was a couple, you know, it added up to 10,000 a unit or something, they added on to the cost of the building. But you know, when you're selling $800,000 condos, what's 10 grand, you know? And I mean, I'm not, you know, it's not my checkbook, but I'm just saying.
I wouldn't know.
Yeah, me neither, me neither. But you know, that, that's, that's kind of where it's at, if the numbers still work for them. So we want that to happen. And, and you know, and then we had a millage, and we got, we put a millage in front of the voters, and they decided to approve it. And that's, again, for affordable housing, but the, the use language is kind of vague. And so I'd like to tighten that up. And as Jennifer Hall told me when I first came on council, we need to hold the line on these numbers, that we shouldn't be considering anything above 60 AMI affordable. It's workforce, it's the market rate in most communities, slightly below market rate here, whatever, that we just, we really need to hold the line on those numbers, and really start looking at the federal minimum wage, hopeful federal minimum wage types, $30,000 a year, $40,000 a year. And those are, those are hourly workers and service workers and people we want to live in our community, so.
And speaking of money, I know the city is having to adjust their, their future planning and how they spend money, because the income they're getting is less due to the pandemic. And I understand that the departments have been asked to look at ways to cut back their budget, lower it by 5%. Could you speak on that, please?
Yeah, I will. I, you know, I actually am on the record as not supporting the last budget cycle. I was the only person who voted against it, because we were told we were supposed to cut some, almost 4 million from that, and we cut like 1.2. And now we're coming back and we're trying to cut nine over the next two years. And so, you know, I would have, had rather had done a couple percent a year than all at once. But all of the departments, save one, had managed to find a way to either raise revenue or, or cut costs. And I can speak for parks, because I'm on Parks Advisory Commission as an example. And so one of the things that we did, we, we did manage to find some place to save costs. And we also took a look at our, you know, user fees for services, like, you know, memberships, pool passes, that kind of thing. And those hadn't been updated gen, since 2015, mostly. And so they were due for review anyway. So a small change over a large number of those fees was able to make it up for parks. So it's, it's cutting costs and also raising revenues. And you know, like for the police department, so defund the police has been a popular notion. And, and you know, rightly so in many communities. And we already have kind of a lean police department. And so Chief Cox, who's really looking at community policing, but he's gonna meet that goal by not rehiring, as we have attrition from retirements. And we knew several years back that we had a big wave of retirees coming on. And so he's choosing not to fill those positions. And when, as the community grows, if we do need to fill those positions, he's gonna fill them with folks who are more able to do the types of things that we would want to defund the police and put the money towards. Social service folks, people who are cross-trained, community mental health issues, plus officers. So he's doing a good job at sticking with his community policing plan, and, and he's finding his savings through attrition, which is effectively defunding. And so I, I was happy to see what he brought forward. And you know, everybody's taking a shot at it. Though, the, the one department that didn't cut back was the Office of Sustainability Initiatives, OSI, which is the A20 plan, and, and they actually wanna add some staff. And so that's good, that's a balance. We have to decide if we can afford to do that as a community, if we can keep our carbon neutrality commitments, and, and if we can keep them in a way that doesn't break the bank. If we fully funded the A20 plan, like is asked for, it, it, just at the end of the next fiscal year, we'd be below our suggested cash reserves in our general fund. And so we gotta look at ways to be smarter about that and reprioritize, you know, what we can do as a community to reach those goals. And I think some of that can happen through our zoning and planning efforts. And I think some of it can happen through community efforts and so on. And you know, we're, generally, we're a wealthy community, and so a lot of people can afford solar, as an example. So we've had good success with the solar programs in other, in other areas. You know, it, there's just no way around it. We have to, we have to change the laws around it to make it easier for us. So there's challenges in implementing that plan. It's a, it's a bold plan, it's a billion dollars over the next 10 years, so.
Well, we'll be watching that. There, there was something new that came up just recently. And it has to do with looking at the council rules and how, how much time council members have to speak. The, the idea being that council meetings are very long, and the, and you're looking for ways to maybe shorten the time, because they go late into the night. And there was an idea of, of limiting the amount of time that council members have to speak. Could you clarify that?
Yeah, that's, that's accurate. That was put forward. And it, we have three minutes to speak the first time on a topic, and three minutes the second time under the current, old rules. Now it's three minutes and two minutes. We have a thing called council communications, which have to start in the end of the meeting. And, and that went to two minutes, two minutes. And so, you know, I, I see that less as Jeff Hayner gets to speak less, and more like the 25,000 people that are representing Ward One get to speak less, because I really am their voice at the table. And so I'm not a fan of cutting our council communication or our council speaking times. I would much rather say, hey, you got five minutes combined? And, and, and instead of having just two opportunities, I'd like to do like they do in, in a parliament or in Congress, where they, I say, okay, I wanna say something for a minute about that, and I reserve the rest of my time, and have somebody keeping time like that, so we can have a better dialogue around these issues, instead of you got three minutes the first time, two minutes the second time. Because what happens is, that doesn't really, I, I really think we'd do better if we said, here's my total amount of time, I can speak to one topic, a minute, a minute, and then somebody says, and say, yeah, but you know, sure, that's great. But I also like to point out that somebody said that, and you know, whatever, I think we'd have better dialogue. So I think there's ways around these rules to get the outcomes we want. I didn't support the rule change. I was, again, I was the only person who voted against that rule change. And you know, if we want, if we want meetings to go quicker, we should look at what's on the agenda, not stack five public hearings during the same meeting. And if we want better behavior out of council, well, we simply have to behave better. I don't need rules to tell me to, you know, behave better. And so, yeah, I didn't love it, I didn't love it.
Yeah, well, speaking of behavior, there's something else that came to my attention was a new count, a new violation that was being suggested as to council members and how they speak to each other, and whether there's some negative attack on, from one council member to another. And that's new. So what's happening with that?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure what's happening with that, 'cause I try not to take part in any of that kind of behavior. I've found myself in the past defending my colleagues on some issues. I, I'm here to talk, I'm there to talk about the policies and the matters before us, and not, you know, suggest somebody's, suggest that somebody's behavior is one way or another, and, well, you know, guess why they're acting in a way, or why they support or don't support an issue. And so I'm not sure where that's really coming from. The part I really didn't like about that was the suggestion that it could happen to our speech outside of the council, the public table. So you know, essentially, they're saying, hey, you know, you can't go on Facebook and say something, you can't be at a community meeting and say, well, I feel strongly that, that this person is mistaken about that. I, I don't think that it was right for them to do this or that. And so I think, well, where do, where do you draw the line? If you, you know, in monitoring our behavior outside of the council. I recognize it as elected official, I have a, you know, I'm, I'm charged to, you know, I'm more of a public figure. And so my behavior can communicate positively or negatively, thanks to the rest of the community. But at the same time, I, I, you know, it's not a full-time job, I'm a resident. And I just think it's odd to suggest monitoring our behavior away from the council table. I just, it just seems strange to me, I don't know what the, what the end goal is there.
So it, so what you're saying is it kind of gets to be muddy waters?
Well, I think a little bit, and, and we ask our attorney to opine on the, the conversion of this with Open Meetings Act, which is really to allow the public access to our decision-making, not access to speak, and the First Amendment, which is, can government limit in certain situations, you know, or how can government limit in certain situations, public speech? And so, you know, there's, in, in that whole discussion, there's, there's a notion of a true public space, like a sidewalk or a park, or, you know, whatever. And then there's a regulated public space, like the city council meeting. And so what really happens, we're allowed fully to regulate the, the time of someone's speech, you know, when, when it happens, broadly, what can they talk about? Should they speak to something on the agenda, as an example? And so because we're a body that makes our own rules, and those rules apply not only to us, but the public within certain parameters, that, you know, it's an interesting topic, and we're, we're going down, there's a lot of slippery slopes around limiting speech. And, and I don't, you know, we have, we have rules that talk about obscenity and so on, CTN, right? So if people are cursing on a meeting and you guys are broadcasting it, does it come up against FCC rules, as an example? So there's a lot of interest, I mean, I was very interested to read our attorney's take on this. It was, it was informative.
Jeff, it's been a pleasure, as always. And I, I hope you stay cozy and healthy, and thank you for joining us.
Well, thank you, I, I always, it's always great to talk to you, and I appreciate what you're doing at CTN.
Thank, and I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
This is Bonnie Gabowitz for Ward Talk. We'd love to hear from you. I look forward to seeing you next month. Be healthy, take care. This is Bonnie Gabowitz for Ward Talk. We'd love to hear from you. I look forward to seeing you next month. Be healthy. Take care.